Welcome to the Murfreesboro City Council. It's our regular meeting, July 18th. If you will, if you'll bow your heads. I'm gonna handle the prayer tonight and the pledge of... Actually, I'm gonna do something on the fly. I'd love for the students with... At Reeves Rogers to come up and stand at the podium when I get done. And if y'all will do the pledge of allegiance, that would be great. I'm so... What's... Yeah, I'm sorry. My kids went to Reeves Rogers Discovery School. It's really hard to be able to change that. So if you'll bow with me, we'll start the prayer and pray for me then my memory. So, Father, we thank you for this night. We thank you for the chance that we get to come here, that we have the opportunity to represent the citizens of Murfreesboro, that we live in a blessed city, that we have so many things to be thankful for. Most of all, Father, we thank you for the residents in this city. We thank you for our families, for the blessings that they are and for the ability that they give us to be able to represent this city and take time away from them. Lord, we pray for all of our employees. We pray for every single person that's on the line every day doing the duty of this city. Lord, let us make decisions that will be fitting to you tonight. We thank you for all of these things, for the blessings you've given us, for loving us, and we ask these things in Jesus Christ's name. Amen. All right. Students, if y'all come to the podium and you'll just start the pledge allegiance. Right there, Scott. Come on over to the podium, right here. There you go. There we... There you go.
Go ahead. Start us off.
allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. And y'all can just remain standing there if you will. We have a ceremonial item tonight. I want to introduce the principal of the Discovery School, Ms. Maddox, but also I want to recognize that we have the chair of our school board here tonight. We have Butch Campbell. We also have Ms. Lisa Trail, who's here tonight, who does yeoman's work in making sure that the communications of the school go out and that we're all informed of things like we're representing tonight.
Thank you, Mayor McFarland. It's an honor to be here as you guys take time to recognize our students that have done a great job representing Murfreesboro on a national level. And it is with great pride that I get to introduce truly the person that has made this happen for the students. He is one of our remarkable Beta Coaches. This is Mr. Jason Page, and he's going to give you specifics about their recognition.
Well, Beta Club is a national organization that focuses on leadership, on service, and on academic achievement. And our students that are involved in Beta Club have service hours and service projects that they are responsible for. And also, we have the opportunity to go each November to Nashville for the state convention and compete in academic and visual art competitions. This past November, we placed top five in 18 categories in the state, including six first-place awards. One of our students was elected as the vice president of the state for elementary for Beta Club as well. As a result, she has attended Leadership Academy this summer and represented us in that leadership camp where students from all across the country came as well. And then we went on to the National Convention in Oklahoma. And over 20,000 students from across the country came to compete at the National Convention. We had placing in the top 10 nationally nine categories in Oklahoma, including first-place in science, and our Quiz Bowl team was the national champions there as well, first-place for them. So... And with me tonight are some of the... Those who competed in the National Convention this past couple... Few weeks ago, actually. So we're just honored to not only represent Discovery School, but we represent, you know, the entire school district and really the city of Murfreesboro. So we're really honored the way that they... Our students were able to represent our school and our city, both on a state level and then on a national level as well. And we really just thank you for inviting us here tonight and for recognizing our students and helping us celebrate their achievements and their accomplishments. So we appreciate that quite a bit. Thank you. Okay. Yeah. Okay. So we have Keegan Sparks, Jack Gray, Alicia Moreno, Rachel Swickert, Ellie Gardner, Grayson Lynn, and Matthew Smith, and Andrew Smith.
Well, you know, we... One of the things that we always like to do is not only representing the kids, but I know there's some parent... Some very proud parents and grandparents who are sitting in the audience. And so I know, right now, y'all don't realize how important your parents are. You will later on. When I graduated college, my parents quickly turned into the smartest people I know. Before that, I didn't think they were that smart. But we want to thank y'all for what y'all do, for how you've invested into your kids and being able to get them to this point. Also, to Mr. Page, Ms. Maddox, and all the teachers in our school system, what else can you say when you see things like this? So congratulations.
Thank you.
All right. Ms. Lisa, you want to get a picture? All right. So let's come right here and let's get a... Y'all, come over here.
I'm going to slowly shuffle.
That's right. Y'all, come over. You've still got them on before you start school.
Oh, don't get them. I'm sure we can do that.
All right. Ready? Here you go.
Oh, don't tell me that.
Hey, so what's pretty cool is that we get to not only... Thanks for Councilman Shacklet for keeping us up on this. Councilman Shacklet represents us, the city council, on the school board. But what's really cool is that not only do we get to recognize achievements in sports like state champion... State champions in football and basketball and baseball and soccer teams that come up, but we also get to recognize major educational achievements. And they're just as important as what we have on the athletic field. So fantastic job. And everyone who's here, y'all are welcome to stay for the entire council meeting, but y'all are also free to go if y'all would like to go. All right. Thank y'all. Mr. Tucker, I'm sorry that we're losing... You're losing some of your audience, but... All right, now we have Mr. Tucker, who's our county historian. And Mr. Tucker, it's my understanding you have quite the following on City TV3 of people who want to see you on a monthly basis, so...
I've been told that.
Okay.
Yeah. And I was real flattered by the distinguished audience I had. I'll get even with you for dismissing them. We all know, or should know.
It's Butch's world. We're just... We just live in it.
I can... I can see that.
We were laughing at you and Mr. Baines.
Butch, come up here and sit down and listen to me. There you go. We were talking history, and you're the biggest history object in the room at the moment, so... Now, I do want to comment on a serious topic. We all know or should know the story of Sam Davis. I wanted to offer tonight the rest of the story. Sam Davis, boy, hero of the Confederacy. We don't honor and memorialize Sam Davis for combat heroics. He had very little combat experience or exposure. He was a spy, a spy serving the Confederacy. We don't honor and remember him for his spy work. It probably was adequate, but that's not why we have a memorial and a special place in Rutherford County for Sam. We remember Sam Davis for his example of courage, loyalty, friendship, even face... In the face of death. As a spy, he was captured. He was given the death penalty by the commanding seniority of the Union Army. He was offered his life and essentially freedom if he would identify the leadership of the spy network and explain how the network operated. He refused to. Even as he stood on the scaffold, he was again... That offer was made to him. He said, according to those who were there, "Kill me a thousand times, but I will not betray my friends." As I said, we memorialize him for this loyalty and courage. I will not betray my friends. He died with those words on his lips. Individual who was the head of the spy network, a principal one that he was protecting, fellow named Henry Shaw. Shaw was not a military man. He actually was what today we'd call a defense contractor. He had made an agreement with Braxton Bragg, the general in charge of the Middle Tennessee Theater, to provide information on the movement of the federal forces in Middle Tennessee. He worked undercover as a peddler, had a peddler's wagon, went from community to community under the guise of a peddler. What's interesting is that Shaw was also captured. He was in custody at the time that Sam Davis died. But when he was pressed by his captors, Brigadier General Dodge, he identified himself and his role. He explained what the network consisted of. And he actually gave to the federal general a copy of his orders from Braxton Bragg. Shaw went to prison as a prisoner of war. In January 1865, several months before the end of the war, he was released. First thing he did apparently was he wrote a letter to what remained of the Confederate administration, asking to be reimbursed for the loss of personal property. His wagon, his horses are the personal property. He got back what we'd call a form letter that said, "We don't have any record of you being in the service. Provide us a copy of your orders or whatever evidence you have of your being in that role." He wrote back, and we actually have found the document in the Confederate archives, and said, "I don't have it." And his explanation was quoting, "My orders were given up to secure my protection." We also found recently in the archives in the state of Iowa, which is where his family, his descendants settled, eventually gave to the archives all of the general's personal file of his military experience. We found among those documents the original copy of the orders Braxton Bragg gave to Shaw. So it's clear Shaw betrayed his trust, betrayed his friends, betrayed his comrades. It's a sad irony that the courage and the loyalty and the willingness to sacrifice of Sam Davis was not reflected or found also in his commander. These were not virtues apparently shared with Henry Shaw. It's even further ironic that for the rest of his life, Henry Shaw was celebrated and honored by the Confederate veterans, believing that he had played a critical role and unaware of his betrayal. Shaw's treachery and his betrayal were not exposed until we found the documentation in 2013, just a few years ago, and is yet to be widely circulated. History's not always fair. There's still a lot that we can learn about our history. The question, though, was Sam Davis's death in vain? I think not, because he still is the example we can look to of courage, of loyalty, of friendship, and the unwillingness to betray in order to protect his own life. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Tucker. I missed something tonight, and I want to introduce a young gentleman that we have here, Mr. David Artherton. He's with Troop 441 out of Christiana. He's working on his citizenship badge, and he is here with his dad Larry. So if you wouldn't mind standing up, thank you for being here tonight. You have several items on the consent agenda in front of you.
If there are no questions, I'll move for approval. Second.
Motion to second. Ms. Vickery, if you'll please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Scales Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. We'll move into old business, and we have ordinance 19014, zoning amendment, General Industrial, second and final reading.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion to second. Ms. Vickery, if you'll call the roll.
Vice Mayor Scales Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. All right, we have ordinance 1915, a zoning amendment to the plan signage overlay. This is second and final reading and presented by planning.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion to second. Ms. Vickery.
Vice Mayor Scales Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Ordnance 1916, signed ordinance amendment pertaining to building entry signs, banners, and institutional group assembly uses. This is the second and final reading and was also presented by planning.
Second.
Motion to second. Ms. Vickery.
Vice Mayor Scales Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. We'll move into new business, land use matters. We have the Planning Commission recommendations to schedule public hearings. Mr. Baumley.
Good evening, Mayor McFarland and members of council. We have nine public hearings that the Planning Commission is recommending approval on that we need to schedule. The Planning Commission considered them last Wednesday on July the 10th. We would recommend a public hearing date for all nine items of August the 22nd. That will give us enough time to advertise. It's nine public hearings. I would estimate that to conduct all nine public hearings will take about two hours. So we can accommodate all nine in one meeting if you so desire.
Yeah, these went through the Planning Commission pretty quickly, so I wouldn't say it was a short night, but with nine public hearings, but they weren't... I don't think we're talking about staying into the wee hours to get these nine in.
So is that a motion? Mr. Smotherman, is that a motion?
I was just informational.
I was getting ready to second.
I'll make a motion for August 22nd.
Second.
Motion to second. Ms. Vickery.
Vice Mayor Scales Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland, there's a second component to the Planning Commission recommendations. It's to unschedule a public hearing for August 29th, if you will. During its regular meeting on May 1st, the Planning Commission conducted a public hearing on the text amendment for the proposed city core overlay district. We delayed that public hearing until August 29th so that the zoning map amendment could catch up with it, if you will. At the July 10th Planning Commission meeting after a public hearing, the Planning Commission voted to defer action on the map amendment of the city core overlay district, and we'd like for those to be able to run in tandem. As staff, we want to take a step back, maybe simplify the proposed ordinance amendment and do some additional public outreach to get additional buy-in from the community. So we would ask that you vote to unschedule the public hearing that we have for the text amendment on August 29th that was scheduled several months ago. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
So move.
Second.
Motion to second.
Vice Mayor Scales Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Baumley.
Hey, are there... Do we still have other public hearings on the 29th other than that? That particular one?
No, that was the only one, so now we have no public hearings on the 29th.
All right. Thank you.
Sure.
Okay. We'll move into an acquisition of a pedestrian walkway to Salem Elementary School. Mr. Tucker.
Thank you, Mayor McFarland, members of council. On behalf of the Murfreesboro City Schools and the Engineering Department, I am requesting your approval to acquire a vacant abandoned parcel of South Southern Meadows subdivision for construction of a pedestrian pathway into the new Salem Elementary School. And as set forth in the council communication, we are specifically requesting the council authorize this acquisition through a condemnation action. The reason that we are requesting to do the acquisition through a condemnation action is because of uncertainty of title with respect to who owns the vacant lot. The Homeowners Association in Southern Meadows subdivision has maintained that lot, but it is still named in the... The lot is still held in the name of the subdivision developer. That LLC was administratively dissolved by the Secretary of State, and the only member and registered agent of that LLC is deceased. So the most effective and efficient way to facilitate this acquisition is through a condemnation action.
But this property is on the plat, it's listed as common area. It's not listed as a buildable lot that we would be condemning?
That's correct. It is not a buildable lot, and in fact, there is a TVA easement right across that common area, so it is not buildable. And the total expense of acquisition and construction of a sidewalk from the subdivision to Salem Elementary School is estimated to be between $20,000 and $25,000. From a kind of a safety access standpoint is that this will allow pedestrian access from the subdivision to Salem Elementary School. That part of St. Andrews, there are not sidewalks, and it would also minimize the amount of traffic of people, parents driving children from that subdivision to the new school.
And I would add that funds are available in the roadway budget, roadway construction budget for the school to handle the sidewalk.
One thing I would ask, we've dealt with this, and we deal with this every year at the start of school, that there needs to be communication sent out to the Homeowners Association that this is not a drop-off and pick-up spot, because if I were the neighbors that were around where this is going to go, the last thing I would want is people driving through the subdivision every morning and every afternoon, blocking their driveways. So if we... I'm all for having the access, but we know that we're gonna... We'll have an issue if we're not careful with how we message that.
Certainly, we'll communicate that, probably with Lisa Trail and at Murfreesboro City Schools as how best to get that information out.
Okay.
And to add to that, you know, I don't know how you do this, but if parents are going to let their children walk to school, you know, they should probably be walking from door to door, not the same internal drop-off, much less external drop-off from the subdivision. So I know that's what you're touching at, but just to clarify, too.
Yeah, we've got the same issue going to the back of Siegel Elementary and Siegel Middle that every year, I forget what the... I don't remember what the street is, Sam, but every year, people... Is it Palace, maybe? Bishop? That people are putting cones out in front of their driveways just because we have that issue, so... Any questions?
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion to second. Ms. Vickery, if you'll please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Scales Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. We now have an agreement for economic development consulting services. Mr. Tyndall.
Yeah, it says in agreement with AC Economics. The principal is Jim Coulson, who you met a couple of weeks ago, spoke before council. This is to initiate development of our economic development program in-house and to supplement what the chamber does right now for economic development. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Is this budgeted?
This is budgeted in the economic development budget for this year.
Roughly, how much do we have budgeted for that?
In the entire budget for economic development, it's $300,000.
How much is this one going to be?
This one is...
$135,000.
$135,000.
Phase one and two.
Yeah. Over a period of time in phases. The only thing I would add, we did in paragraph...
3-1.
3-1. In paragraph 1, in the first phase, where it discusses where the key stakeholders, we did add Rutherford County Chamber of Commerce in there, so they're specifically called out in that. And Jennifer has a current copy of that amendment.
I'll move for approval.
Second.
Motion to second.
Vice Mayor Scales Harris.
No.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
No.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. All right, any licensing?
We have two tonight. One is a new location, a restaurant at 1500 Medical Center Parkway, Suite 1K. The other is an ownership change for a restaurant located at 2955 South Rutherford Boulevard. We recommend approval pending final building and codes inspections. We also have a special event for Main Street Murfreesboro on July 27th. The other is an ownership change for a restaurant located at 2955 South Rutherford Boulevard. We recommend approval pending final building and codes inspections. We also have a special event for Main Street Murfreesboro on July 27th.
Second. Motion to second.
Vice Mayor Scales Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye, we have one board and commission appointment, uh, recommending Cindy Nance for, Ronnie's newer on the council, but several years ago, we put a, an employee representative on the pension commission, and we've had three employees so far. We've had Mark McCluskey, we've had Mr. Sam Smith. Mark represented the fire department, Sam represented the police department, and Ms. Nance is representing the Parks and Recreation Department, um, representing all the employees, but someone from, from our, uh, different departments. So it's a one-year term.
Move for approval.
Second. Motion to second. Ms. Vickery, if you'll please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Scales Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Smotherman.
Aye.
Mr.